Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Eastland Board of Education Board meeting for this evening. We've got some wonderful guests with us, we'll get to in just a minute. But I want to call the meeting to order and our first order of business will be to pledge allegiance. So we're going to get our Flanders students to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to our United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, okay, alright, since our kids are here, we're gonna just make a adjustment on the agenda before we elect a board chair for our Board of Education. We're gonna go down to our Flanders students so we can have them do their presentation. And then after that, we'll do an election for a board chair. So, Mrs. Anania, you've got some guests.
Yes, we do.
So I'll ask you to come forward and do an introduction and let our students take it from there.
This is a big night for some people that are in here. Elementary teachers do an amazing job of building their classroom community. And it takes a little more planning, a little more effort when you build a school community. So at Flanders, once a month, we have all-school meetings that are completely student-run. We also have enrichment activities where the whole school, and the all-school meeting is really to share their learning. The enrichment activity is for your whole school together to do an activity at the same time. So it could be an art activity, it could be a cooperative game activity, and it does vary each month. The reason why we're here tonight, there is another way to build school community, and that is through our Flanders news program. And I have part of our news crew here tonight. They're our fourth graders. And they very much deserve the Viking Valor Award, along with Julian Evans, who is also here tonight. He is the advisor, the morning news program advisor who oversees this. But at this point in time, overseeing them is one thing, but this is a program, again, that is student-run, and Ryan is ready to go to take part. But it really does instill a really huge sense of responsibility and independence, and they take it very, very seriously. I think I was one of the first people that was interviewed this year with a new news crew. They were very nervous, but they did a very good job. Actually, they got me a little nervous, but they took it seriously. It is an amazing program, and I believe that you're gonna see a little snippet of one of them, and I'm just very impressed with the production of it and what they're sharing. You'll hear a little bit more. So at this point in time, I'd like Julian to come up.
So I made a short video just to show you some of the things that we do. Ryan, if you'd like to do it.
Hi, my name's Cassandra.
And my name's Shashrika. And welcome back to the Flanders All-Star News Show 3.
So Shashrika, what do you want to do today?
Hmm, good question.
Did you know that we are in training to be social detectives? Did you know that social detectives use their eyes, and their ears, and even their brains to figure out what is expected and the behaviors that we should have in different situations?
Just simply, I'm here for group!
That's very unexpected.
Why must I always be "I'm here for group"? Oh, that was an unexpected way to enter the room for group.
Yeah.
I'm Kelsey, and today I'm going to be interviewing Mr. Parker from iNews Channel 3. Mr. Parker is on the morning show and was a student here at Flanders. What is your favorite memory of being here at Flanders?
I think my favorite memory is the egg drop. We used to have to make the cardboard boxes and protect the egg, and we'd throw them off the roof of the gym. I still remember doing that. I don't think my egg ever survived, but I always liked that project and had a lot of fun here at Flanders.
Looking very handsome in this next photograph at Mr. Evans' class, right Eric?
I was in Mr. Evans' class at Flanders Elementary School, the school I went to 30 years ago.
That is amazing.
The kids asked me great questions, and they interviewed me for the morning news show, which they put together. They do a fabulous job, so good morning to them. Thanks for having me on Friday. Have a great week at school, guys.
Oh my god, that's awesome.
We had a wonderful time visiting the Flanders Firehouse. The students got to go inside an ambulance, see all the tools that a fire truck can hold, and go inside the front of a fire truck too.
Hey, Mia.
Hey, Luke.
You know, why does sour cream have an expiration date? I don't know. Isn't sour cream already sour? Yeah.
Three, two, one.
Thank you for watching the Flanders All-Star News Show 3.
Please, please, please subscribe. It's for me, Shashrika, and Mr. Puppet, aka Mr. Mousie Mousie Pooh.
I thought you were not friends with him.
Right, him.
Anyways, thank you for watching the Flanders All-Star News. Bye.
So they definitely are a kind of a joy for my work week, is working with these very talented set of kids, and I really like kind of give them the breadth to kind of take the show where they want it. We kind of have a formula, but we kind of every time we sort of talk about whether we can, how we can improve it. So it's a testament to their skills, like half the grade work with me, and I think they do an excellent job, and I really like working with them. So they wanted to share some of the reasons, some of the things they do in a news program, and also tell you why they enjoy doing it.
Hi, my name is McKenna.
Hi, my name is Cassandra.
Hi, my name is Derry.
We are three of the anchors on the Flanders All-Star News. I really enjoy getting to write my own script and writing stuff, and I don't just anchor, I also like to help around behind us. That's not all the amazing stuff at Flanders All-Star News, but if I told you everything, I'd probably be like, "I...". On the news, I want to collaborate with other anchors and ask for advice. I can really express my creativity and enjoy learning new things I wouldn't have learned. I do enjoy. Overall, I love the news, and I would recommend it to anyone who wants to join.
For the news this year, I chose the job of being a anchor. I chose this job so I could express myself and hang out with my friends at the same time. Even though it takes a long time, it will always turn out great. I used to be shy, and being on the news has helped me to calm my stress. I would also like to thank Mr. Evans and all the parents who called for it, not everyone.
Hi, my name is McKear, and I'm an anchor on the news. But I also have a section on the news called Ultimate Laughter, and I do it with Luke. We begin by researching strange expressions before writing a funny script. Finally, we'll practice before getting videoed against a green screen. The goal of this feature is to make people laugh and think at the same time.
Hi, my name is Dani Karen, and I am one of the directors. Depending on the day and what is scheduled, I move around the school working with the world in here. I am in charge of this video, whether it's for bookworms in the library, or social detectives in the hallway, or other classrooms. But sometimes I stay in a room and direct the other anchors. I love the Flanders All-Star News. It can show off our talents and more, like sharing their pet jokes and dances. The Flanders All-Star News is a great part of the school family. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sophia. I'm a videographer, and that means I set up the camera and take the shots. When you decide to be a videographer, you have to learn about all the buttons and how to work the camera. You also learn about how to set up the tripod which the camera sits on. I really like being a videographer for the news because I think it's a good learning experience. I get to try out new things, and I really enjoy it.
Hello, I'm Fajout, and I'm an interviewer at the news. I really like making interviews because it always makes me very happy whenever I always feel very sad. I always express my feelings, and I always try to make eight or more questions at a word. And I really like it, and it's funny, and I really like other people trying to try and making other scripts, and thank you.
Hi, my name is Rowland, and I'm in April. Working with the Flanders All-Star News has been a blast. With my co-editor Fiona, we put together videos that the videographer films. We also use bumbles that Mr. Evans creates and add them in. We also add in special effects. We adjust the volume, and we add in slap track for joke break, and make the green screen colors. I've learned so much about using iMovie, and I can't wait to see what we do next.
And I just wanted to thank, I also have Mrs. Karen and Mrs. Paul both helped me. It'd be pretty much impossible to do that because I can only be in one room, and they're going around the school doing various other interviews or helping out, so I really appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
So, Sophia, can we get John to mention, as former graduate, to join me? Two of our board members will join me in congratulating you and presenting all of you, and Mr. Evans, and Mrs. Anania, with what we call a Viking Valor. So I'm gonna read this, Eastline Public Schools Viking Valor Award, presented to the Flanders News Program at Flanders Elementary School in recognition for exemplary service performed well above and beyond expectations. Great job. Come on up here. So we want to hold this right in front. What do you think, want to hold that right in front? You stand right in front. We'll squeeze in, open up the, there you go. Wonderful.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
And Mrs. Anania, I talk, we're gonna make some copies because this, you saw on the slide, you've got over half the, yeah, the grade level is part of the news crew, so great job, everybody.
Thank you.
Very proud of you.
Thank you very much.
So you want to stay the rest of the night? It's only gonna be a couple hours.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you being here. Thanks a lot. Good job.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Thank you.
Grant, you want to send me that last round?
Yeah. Our next agenda item, election of the Board of Education Chairman. So at this point, I want all the other nominations for the chair of the board. Next, we have the second, the other nominations. None, none, none of the nominations. And we'll ask for a motion to elect Tom Winkler as chairman of the Eastline Board of Education. Do you want to make a motion? Here's the second. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
If you use over, I'll turn it over to you. Once a year, I get that. New role.
So the next item is to elect the Board of Education Secretary, who actually serves as really device, device care. And I'll open the floor for nominations for Secretary. Jamie?
I would like to nominate Candace Carlson, all second of them.
Okay. The other nominations? The other? Okay, I'll, I'll see, actually, it's supposed to call for a motion to close the nominations.
A motion?
A motion.
All second of them.
John got the second. All in favor? Alright, okay, and so the motions are closed, and now everyone who's in favor of election of Candace Carlson as the board secretary, signify by saying a "aye".
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous, and congratulations, Candace.
There you go. Roll set.
And I must, I must say, just as a point of recognition, Jamie's been an absolutely outstanding board secretary, and I know, I actually served as board secretary many, many years ago, and it's a, it's a job that requires attention.
Jamie is amazing, so I say that's what she needs to tell us, amazing. If I were a graduate, I'd say, "It's amazing".
And as, as just another thing before I open up for public comment, I'd like to welcome Kate Steele and Barry Shackley as two new board members. Welcome, and we look forward, everybody looks forward to having you join the board and becoming one of the ten, so. And we'll have, I'm sure we'll be very productive as a board. At this point, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Anybody like to address the board concerning the matter? Yes?
Absolutely. Come on in.
And state your name and address.
Address, sure. My name is Rebecca Karen, and I reside at 3 Aberdeen Court. As Mr. Evans pointed out, I'm one of the parents who volunteers with the news crew on Wednesday afternoon, my son John is involved. And what you didn't see in that phenomenal video was how it is the whole school that participates, not just the news crew. From Ms. Anania, to the PE teacher, to the psychologist, to the student submitting video, to the parents submitting perfect pet videos that their kids work on at home, it is just, it runs the gamut of what happens at the school. And my favorite element of what my son is learning is personal responsibility and taking accountability for actions. I'm so proud of the environment that Mr. Evans is fostering in knowing that you can't always work well with your friends, and sometimes you need to work with other people and form new relationships, and how important it is to take accountability for decisions that might have seemed good at the time and then ended up not being so good. Sometimes you film things that don't work well on camera, you can't pick it up on the film, and footage is lost. And it was very important that my child learned that lesson in a safe environment and grew from that, because that's something that he's going to learn the rest of his life, that sometimes you just need to say, "Yeah, I screwed that up, I'm sorry. How can I help? How can I fix it?". And that, to me, as a parent, is, is the best thing, best part of the news crew, and I'm so appreciative of, you know, Ms. Anania and Mr. Evans for allowing that environment to, you know, grow and, and the kids learn that. Thank you.
Excellent. Bill, anything for us?
Sure.
Brian?
So Ryan Trader, 15 Applewood Common. Since I was out of town during our last regularly-scheduled board meeting after the election, as I did tend tonight and kind of provide what was in my final board comment, yeah, I'd just like to express gratitude for the opportunity to serve on this board. Thank you to the whole board, central office, the principals, for welcoming me into the community, listening to me, responding to my concerns. This board showed me how a large group of people can work well together with different backgrounds, different perspectives, and still, it still drive good outcomes. I've served on many boards and committees, they haven't worked as well as this board. You know, I think, and I think this board needs to be proud of the way that you can still be critical, challenge each other, and still drive consensus in most of our votes. I think when I, since I've been on this board, I can count on one hand, and I don't think I need all, the number of times that we didn't have unanimous vote. And I don't think that that's because we didn't debate and have this agreement, I think it's because people felt that they were heard and that they could accept the outcome. And, you know, I, I learned a great deal from this board, and I'm grateful that as a parent with two kids in our school system, and two more on the way, I played a small role. And I think that, you know, doing the whole as a parent and board member did help me understand how the schools are operating and how our decisions affect the students and teachers. So now we have one fewer parent with children in schools, make sure you listen to that parent's feedback, the teacher's feedback, it's even more important. And I think we have some challenges coming up, I think that, you know, that it's critical that we stay united. So this is not the last you'll hear from me. My children are gonna be in these schools for 18 more years, which is humbling. I don't want to calculate how old they'll be. And so I'll continue to advocate for schools and support them. I'm joined the superintendent's Parents Advisory Council already, getting involved in my PTA, and I'm looking forward to finding other ways to support our schools, and hopefully I'll learn an opportunity to join the board at some point. But, you know, once again, thank you for allowing me to be part of the board. It's been an honor to serve alongside you. I've been quite a bit personally, and each one of you has taught me, challenged me, and I'm grateful. And in particular, I'd like to thank Tim and Jeff for supporting me and encouraging me, and as hard as it is for me to leave the board, I'm confident that under your stewardship that we can continue to strive to be successful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board at this time?
So we have, the next item is, we have our minutes from the Flanders 25th board meeting, a very good scheduled meeting, and, you know, a motion, we'd like to make a motion. Is there a second? Second, is that Joe?
Yes.
Okay, Joe seconded it. And, okay, any corrections, any adjustments to those? No? All set? Okay, so all in favor of the motion, signify by saying a "aye".
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And Eric abstained, Eric is out, abstained. So those minutes are approved.
What, and Kate and Barry?
Well, Kate and Barry, yeah, that's right, yep. Okay, so that takes us to special reports. We don't have a select representative, but we do have two students.
Hello. I know it's been a little while since we were here last time, but we have our color pink. Which, by the way, on the senior voting, fifty to zero.
So although the juniors lost pretty badly at the halftime, there were a lot of good, there were good statistics from the fall sports. So the football team lost five games, but won five games. And then the field hockey team- And then the field hockey team won twelve games, lost two and tied for two. The boys soccer team won eight games, lost two games and tied two games. The girls soccer team won eleven games, lost four games and tied two games. And the volleyball team won twelve games and lost seven games. And the girls swim team was undefeated with ten wins, and we also won these sixties, which was exciting. So winter sports update, so all winter sports have officially begun and everyone has really been for successful seasons. Girls' and boys' basketball trubs are over, so their first game, the girls is coming up on Tuesday the seventeenth at Waterford at, I believe, six. And the boys will have their first game on Thursday the nineteenth away at Morgan at seven p.m. And both girls' and boys' tracks will have their first meet coming up on the twenty-first at the post road. And there are a few things to look forward to besides sports. So Breakfast with Santa is this Saturday from eight to eleven a.m., which is put on by the peers reaching out. There will also be a gift shop for kids that want to buy simple and affordable gifts for parents and grandparents. The holiday extravaganza will be on Friday, December twentieth during athletics school. And the music department concert will be on Wednesday, December eighteenth at seven p.m. in Oxford.
Sounds good. Excellent. Congratulations. The third place finish in class M's for the girls' team was awesome. It was very good. So I, and you had, I think we had to stay open, it's true.
Yeah.
Good success there.
Yeah.
It's a big deal.
Yeah.
That's great. Any questions for our student representatives? Busy time of the year, right?
It is. Very exciting.
So we expect you to stay. It's amazing. Yeah. Good. Thank you. Okay, so this takes us into our discussion action items for the evening. First one up is for discussion, this is the committee that we have in the board of education. And so at this point, we'll take any and all input as to who would like to be on which committee. And basically, we can take that now, or we can email it to Jeff. We'll put together the proposal, and then we'll bring it back for our first board meeting in January. And then we'll review the, who's going to be on what committee and all of that, and then finalize it, hopefully take action on it at that point. Because the bylaws says there's a thirty day waiting, at least thirty days before we can set the committees up. So it would be great to have, I would really, just some thoughts on my part. It'd be good to have some consistency in terms of some of the folks that have been on those committees, because I think the committees have been remarkably productive. And with our two new board members, it would be great to have Kate on one, AAA or FFO, and Barry on the other one, so we don't have two new people on the same committee. But if that doesn't work out, we can look out. We also have the personnel policy committees. And again, which ones, which ones can be active negotiations first? Yeah, I should have been there. Yeah, we're in the, yeah, for the non- administrative. So anyway, so we'll, we'll, we'll look at that as well. And then, so we have those, just again, the point is that there are three standing committees. The AAA, the FFO, and the policy committee, which is standing. We have the Salem Eastland Cooperative Study Group, which has been somewhat dormant. That's been there. We have ad hoc committees, which are the Chinese program ad hoc committee. And we've had the planetarium ad hoc committee as well. And then for board liaisons, we have Bill and myself and Jeff are on the town building committee. And I guess, we can't really change that unless we, that would require all sorts of things to happen. And then I have served as the learn board, the learn board director, which I'm actually the vice chair for. I would like to continue on that for a little bit here, so.
I'd like to stay here.
And that's easy to think. Eric, are you gonna, you're good or?
Yeah, I, I, I have a question and a comment. So like the planetarium ad hoc committee, which we have, you know, we know that, can we eliminate? Like, I don't know that we, we haven't done anything with it, we haven't heard anything, so I don't know if now's the time. But I would talk like, I don't know if we need to list that as a committee because we haven't gotten any feedback on her information system. So that would be my recommendation.
Yep.
In terms of FFO, you know, Barbara and I were co-chairs. And I think we work well together and we complement each other. So if someone else who has, you know, it'd be great, you know, anyone who wants to join, but with, you know, you can bring someone that what Barbara brought, which was to also, you know, be able to look at the numbers and challenge and all, which we worked very well with. So that was really helpful. But, you know, so it'd be good if someone else, but I want to stay on FFO with that, so.
Okay. Okay. So again, like I say, yeah, Joe, go ahead.
I'd just like to say, same thing, I'm happy with the means I'm on. I still, I spoke to Jeffrey about, at least worrying about being on the learn committee because I know you're probably stepping off in the next couple of years, so maybe you can, the meetings will be.
You can, yep, you certainly, you can attend, we'll talk about that.
Yeah. I just don't want to go in there long.
It's really, it's really, yeah, the one thing about that is, is the meetings are at eight-thirty in the morning and nine o'clock in the morning, which is always hard for, I mean, I don't even still work. If you don't work, it's, it's easy to, to make those times. But yes, yes, that would be wonderful. That would be great.
I'd like to do that.
Anybody else? Anyone? John, Lee?
I'm also happy on FFO and policy. And I know those are both committees where we're looking for some additional folks. So I think I'll make it easy and say I'd be happy to be serving on both of those.
And Bill, any?
I think the AAA is really the best fit for me in terms of, you know.
I think the brand, yeah. I'll talk with Barry and Kate, I know Barry and I are discussing that tomorrow. And Kate will be later on. We can talk a little bit about where you guys feel most comfortable starting off. Because that's the way, it's kind of, it's good to do some, do one of the committees for, you know, for a year and then next remove and kind of get the flavor for everything, so.
Is there a chance to visit the committees at different points?
Yeah.
Because you're not on the committee, doesn't?
You, yeah, you can. What happens is, is that if, you know, there are five, for the two big ones, the AAA and the FFO, we'd like to have five. Okay, so when another board member shows up, then that means that that board member can only just sit in the audience and can't participate. They certainly, they can listen, and after the meeting, they can go and talk to the superintendent, they can talk to, you know, folks, whatever, but during the, during the committee meeting, they can't.
I think what I would like at this point would be to be able to know when the meetings are and be able to attend. I can sit by it.
Yeah, that's good. So, yeah, you're welcome.
And that would also be interesting in the Chinese program and the planetarium.
All right. Okay, good. All right. Okay. The next item, moving on, is the, for discussion action is the meeting calendar date. Date for the board and by, I think it's actually, well, I think it's in our bylaws actually. That we have to set calendar for our meeting dates. These can change, we can change and adjust as so goes the year. But this is basically, the way we basically say that allow the public to know that we're going to plan, we are planning on meeting on these dates. So I didn't know, Jeff and I looked down through it. I didn't see, yeah, good. Eric, yeah, did you find something?
Yeah, well, one, because I tried, I know we all, I think, Mondays is kind of board event day. So the one Tuesday, which is probably the Tuesday after Memorial Day.
There's two Tuesdays, yeah. Yeah, there's one in January after Halloween.
Yep.
I missed that one when I was looking down. Well, let me talk about the one in May. If we, I don't know what's going on, but if we can move it mid-month, only because, otherwise we go from Monday the twenty-seventh, we meet of April. We don't meet for a full month. And it could seem maybe if there's a mid-May, maybe there's a reason. But I know there is the town meeting, the town referendum, but that's.
Yeah.
Those aren't big necessarily deals for us. So if we could move that to mid-May, I don't know if there's some other reason that we can't, but on a Monday, that would be great. And then January Tuesday. Oh, that's for budget celebrations. I think we canceled several times, but we, I think we're generally, hopefully in good shape at that point, but see. So that's okay, I mean, that is what it is. But the May one looks like it's, there's a month in between meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm moving more in the middle, that would be great.
Well, because usually I think we have a meeting after the town meeting, usually.
Oh, okay.
Usually we have it after the town meeting, you come over here and check. Then we bring it back.
Yeah. Fourth, eleventh, eighteenth, twenty-third, eighteen, fourteen, so, also my favorites, middle day, so. Was there, Candace, did you catch something else?
Nope. All right, so more discussion and bringing this back.
Oh, I know, I know one of the reasons why, what we didn't do, here's why. May eighteenth, because we looked, we were going to put it on that date. The problem is we have the high school heart expo out there that night at six o'clock. And we have a speaker coming for the auditorium on mental health. That was the date when we, before we had this set, we went in, both teams coming from the pantry, speaker. Both of those events are occurring. Yeah, I really need to be, especially with the uniform. So that's, that's why we went with Tuesday, couldn't do the eighteenth. I mean, I could, so look and see if there's some other way, but that's kind of different from one.
So if we have to go to Tuesday, I'd still rather we go a week earlier Tuesday, only so that we're not a full month from the meeting.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Again, if we.
We did, we did look at that, too. There's underclassman awards night that Tuesday night, the nineteenth, at seven o'clock. But, and not to say that we couldn't do both those, but, you know.
If it's well thought out, if it's well thought out, that's fine.
We need to try and work through it.
I'm gonna push everyone, you retreat, I swear.
Yeah, January thirteenth. That's going to be the thirteenth after.
The bus is first, first at this?
It's probably, it's not on here right now, we're going to have a meeting, because that would be a special meeting.
Okay, all right. Okay, so it isn't, okay.
So let's, what I'd like to do is, I'd like this to, we can always change this, but we're supposed to adopt the meeting dates. So.
Okay.
But we've got the, that's the point about the May thing. And that Eric spread on is that that's way too, we shouldn't go a month without, we should be new, so.
We can do it on Friday night, is that?
Yeah. So, well, that, Joe. So we will, we will look at that, but what I would like is, it would be good to approve this, this, as rep. Okay, so anybody like to make a vote to approve the?
I'd like to approve the proposed board of education meeting day calendar for the twentieth.
Okay.
I'll second.
Jamie seconded it? Any other discussion on this? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? Calendar date?
Maybe we play with that town meeting date, too.
Yeah, that's what, yes.
That's at seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Maybe we can get a meeting meeting at six, if it's, you know, the town meeting is here. I think it's worth, or that's, we'll work on that, okay.
Next item up for discussion and action is the project oceanology contract. We have that presentation on our last board meeting, was from Project O, focus. Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, we basically, I think, there's no reason why we want to surprise the ocean go away. They've restructured. It was kind of a spark of restructuring and, you know, they, how they, I believe, kind of sparked, you know, let's have them come and talk with us, or give it a look. So at this point, my recommendation to forward, and sign the agreement with them, forty-six thousand dollars roughly is the total cost for a year of Project O. Forty-six thousand?
Six twenty-eight.
Forty-six, six twenty-eight? Okay.
So I just want to be clear, I love that meeting with the action item, I love meeting. So I do, on Tuesday, have a meeting with our high school rep, our middle school rep, as well as our elementary. I did have a follow-up call with them as well. And so I will be sort of doing the project deal, what I've been doing with the field experiences across the elementaries, ensuring that they're common, that they're committed to, and I will be doing that up to eighth grade. So.
See eight, I'm sorry?
Yeah. So mapping that out, so that, you know, strategically, Jason as well has also spoken with his teachers and sort of ensured a guaranteed experience by eighth grade of some of those programs. The other piece of it that I, I don't know that they, you know, it's awkward when they have to get up here and talk about themselves, so they're not going to pose. But one thing I do have to say is, even though their programs, whether they write it up in their contract as far as vessel programs or shore programs, they are very flexible with us being able to, as part of our agreement, be able to say, we want to have a vessel program here, and then we want a shore program here, and we want two to three sort of visits throughout the year with you as a partnership. So they're very flexible with that. So I just want you to know that when you look at the contract and you see the numbers there, know that we have the right to be flexible within this contract and what you just have there. Also, my curriculum fellows for science, in particular at the middle and high school, have also been sent the contract and will be identifying the courses and the standards in units that it's identified. But so I know that that's something I have to circle back to do along the same. All in all, it was a guarantee, oh my God, are you emailing us because you're taking this away? No, 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 no. Emailing it and sort of talked about the program, so. That was one of my critiques that I had, so.
So all of those issues that I kind of asked, that I'm here and get cleared up and back, with the shared experiences, so that this key was not going, this key would never be.
I think it's a snap of fingers.
So we're gonna, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna get, you know, part of Jason's person is Lyndon Astory, is my science contact, and she's very much on board with stretching it out, mapping it out, and sharing some experience throughout. So I feel like I have the right people in place for that conversation.
Just because it is not, you know, the air.
Correct. Yeah. You'll go ahead, Candace.
I found the presentation to be very, very powerful. I thought it was fantastic that they made. I don't think that a lot of people really understood how many different experiences throughout history and fact is actually you have.
Yeah.
And I liked it, and we'll, we'll, yeah, it'll be good.
Yeah.
One question. Are these, are their kids given the opportunity to be able to work with some of the androids that comes to town, like St. Louis River, St. Louis Hills, and the shore, and clean up and invite them to certain people?
Yeah, so we do a big piece of stormwater classrooms with our elementary students. But also, one of the things we're pushing, in particular at the elementary level with our PTAs, is that we're trying to create sort of common field experiences across other elementary grades. So every grade level will have two field experiences that relate to the curriculum. But then also, one of the things that we want to do, so it's cross the three buildings, agreed upon experiences. But then we also want to work with our PTAs, and actually we had a PTA for them meeting at the end of last week, in regards to community events and efforts, because of where schools are located, we understand that they have benefit of different resources. So having our PTA really look, you know, around Flanders and sort of see what our projects within the community, or even, we had the conversation around library, and around the fact that we should ensure that every kid by fourth grade goes to the community library and has a gate with a library card. And, you know, that should be a community experience that we work on. So our PTA right now, in our conversation, has been identifying some of those community experiences that they can work on the teachers.
Great. The other thing, I just went with Spark Makerspace in London, and they had a big project that they did where they had a collaborative with Project O, which I think is really the connection, maybe something that can be facilitated with the first of its own.
Yeah, yeah. Project O was really, you know, they're realizing that partnership with other organizations is probably more of a norm than even if they have to look hard for their own sustainability over time. And I think it's, I understand, but I can certainly reach out to them in regards to integrating some of that work with us.
Barry?
And integration of this with the NGSS standards, how well does, how does that look? And integration of this with the NGSS standards, how well does, how does that look?
In what way?
On the three levels, in terms of the phenomenon and the systemic, the cross-cutting concepts, how are those integrated into the Project O activities within this space?
So I think for, well, it depends on what level, elementary and high, do you agree?
I mean, all the levels.
So I think for us at the elementary level, it's more of a field experience, so it's hands-on lab-based experience, because we do not really provide the explicit lab-based instruction until they hit middle school. So for us, it's a phenomenon-based experience within the lab itself, but Project O as well as them coming into the classroom. So what we'd like to see more of is them coming into the classroom and then us visiting, so that provides a two-part for us. I think for us, especially at the elementaries, you know, we're talking about water cycle, we're talking about weather, so you have some of those bundle-specific topics at the elementary level, whereas at the middle school level, and speaking of Lyndon Astory, her big piece is more of the engineering practices that she feels really help drives home within their NGSS units. They already have an assured lab-based experience, they're teaching lab-based experiences in the middle school, but the engineering practices are something that she finds the students are really applying much more within that vessel experience in particular. At the high school experience, they're using it more for sort of the orientation of the scientists, real-life sort of, now you're in the field, let's fast-forward, you might be interested in doing this for a living, what does that look like? So that's more of a career-oriented lab-based experience for our staff, so that's sort of how we categorize it with alignment to the standards in regards to that. We tend to have a big bio focused within our high school. And I do have to say, we have a medical coding class here at the high school, and their work within their work in regards to NGSS, one of the things within the human body, they have, they sort of have a whole unit of human versus animals, which they even went ahead and did a vessel-based shore experience based on their unit, which I think is something we might look into in the future, some dissection, just pretty intriguing to them, so. I think I have the validation of that level alignment, I think it's more just a cohesiveness of the experience, so.
And the cohesiveness, what is the issue of the cross-cutting concepts with those across all the levels?
What are what?
What is the cross-cutting concept with those across all the levels?
Off the top of my head, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to tell you off the top of my head.
I don't know, just correlation, just operate.
We're just talking about was maybe looking at, you know, using AAA, if you wanted to, you know, even get some of the folks that are engaged and some of the teachers come to AAA and move it forward.
We do have science, does it happen?
We have science coming.
We do, we have practitioners coming in regards to science and in regards to that, so.
Yeah, so that would be a good.
And also just cleaning up the, exactly how all of that is being allocated across the different grades, so that we have the equity control.
Yeah. Maybe we had a chance to take a look to see whether the current contract is gonna allow us to make this equity, or are we gonna have to include more?
No, no, we, everyone, no one felt as though there needed to be an addition, in regards to enough. Yeah, no, we feel as though we have enough experiences where we can sort of lay them out across the grade level, depending on what it is that our focus is.
Okay. You want, you want to roll through? Uh, yes. Yes, so we can action on moving forward that agreement, okay?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Project O job Jill week contract for the twenty-twenty-one school year or fiscal year. I know there's a difference, I just don't.
School year, school year.
School year for the total of forty-six thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Second, forty-six thousand six hundred and twenty-eight.
Jill's second?
Jill's second.
Yep. Okay, further discussion on this one? All those who favor the motion, say why by saying aye?
Aye.
Both? Jane? And Astor?
I did post a cross-cutting concept in the board documents, like you have them, I just pulled them up. You're welcome.
Good.
They have them.
Okay, all right. The next item is annually, we, the board is to review code of ethics that we have within our bylaws. The act is included in the packing. I'll probably just kind of read down through it and make sure that you're aware of these requirements, I guess, of being a board member. And I think we've always been very, very good about it, so. Does anyone have any questions about those, the code of ethics, any concerns? So I think it's important just to remind, remind ourselves about this. I guess, yeah, so, anyway, so, and I guess maybe the big thing is that if you ever have any questions about any matter concerning ethics or your relationship and all that, just, it is, the best thing to do is to go to Superintendent, that's, that's, he's the person is best situated to help you find the right answer to any dilemma that you want to fight in the face of. Okay? Yep. All right, for that. Next item, I'll, well, we're all, yeah, all sorts of things here. The magnet school busing and transportation, and Jeff, you can talk a little more about that, because this came up during the.
Exactly, the first bunch of workshops, yep, and wanted to bring it to the forecourt, just really kind of for some more open dialogue and discussion, because it was broached whether or not, and just to recap, we do, right now, we provide just door-to-door magnet school transportation for those students that are participating in magnet schools. We receive state reimbursement for that, not for the door-to-door, but for the, yeah, for bus, for transport. And we are, you know, not required by law to provide magnet school, VoA programs, we are not the magnet schools. We receive around forty-two.
Received thirteen hundred dollars per student, so.
Which is.
Last year was forty-six thousand, we have forty-six thousand, that was last year's, I think, ten dollars.
So it's a net.
So this year I think there's, there's a couple of things fighting, but again, if there's an application applied, I can, I can file one.
So what we would like to, Kim's here, is a lot of work on busing this year, and again. It's been that year. We had reached out to some of our magnet school families prior to the start of this year about, you know, eliminating the door-to-door. You know, they were stressed about that, obviously, that's why we're bringing it up now, thinking about next year, and possibly going to having central hubs, where parents would have to go in there, to the central hub, get on the bus there, travel to the mass, not eliminating it altogether. Limit it altogether, it's really not, it's not, we're not gonna get the reimbursement anymore, it's not saving us money. But by doing the central hub, we're not gonna save any money either, but we would free up some bus time, correct?
We would get some logistic, yeah, flexibility with the vehicles that are used, and we wouldn't be adjusting bus routes when students' sports or activities end, or a new student starts riding that didn't ride before. It would just be very consistent, it would be easy to message to families at the start of the year, or new families who moved to town. So I think it'd just clean it up a lot, to just offer those centralized hubs.
So we want to put that publicly, is that open up for conversation or recommendation to the parents?
Candace, Lynn, Jill?
I do, I'm aware of, as it had kind of rolled out, I think that a lot of the pushback was honestly that it was just so close to the start of school start. And everything is coming to a hand, your children are going to school, you have work, there's lots of juggling things, and it was now we are going to transfer our children to the hub versus a lot in the morning, but that's what I seem to remember. But if it's something that we can work out and talk to the families that we are serving, and still be able to provide the service through that hub, now what would that actually look like?
Well, it would be probably pretty similar for the high school students to what they're doing now, where there's a bus here at about six twenty-five in the morning, others too, and they hop on and go, you know, to, and the reason why we, it makes sense for us to keep it is because our marine science magnet high school kids are riding with our Norwich Tech kids, for example, so you have some piggybacking going on of places where we are, have to provide the transportation to the places that are magnet schools, which are optional. So, so they get on the vehicle that goes to the destination they're looking for, and off they go. For the elementary students who, you know, we have a, a good chunk that go to regional RMMs in New London, and they would meet, we haven't decided where their hub would be, so we'd like to make it central to the three elementary attendance areas, so maybe not the high school, but it could be the stop-and-shop parking lot, honestly, you know, it could, you know, we haven't decided, but it could be anywhere around town that can, you know, facilitate the bus, and it would be, of course, in line with their start time, so it wouldn't be quite so early. It would be a little later, obviously.
Jill?
Okay, so just the question is, I think maybe I should, Candace had answered. So it's us determining, we're not meeting up with any other school systems, is this something that we're looking at later on that like, you know, water, whatever, something to all do this together? Something to all do this together?
It isn't something we're looking at as a regional partnership at this point, no, I don't know how that would impact the grant, you know, piece of it, I wouldn't think that you would be able to apply the same way.
Yeah, and obviously reduce the cost, I believe the pot water hurdle, they did it on that.
They, yeah, they won't.
So they've already eliminated, they've already eliminated, so they're not doing it at all, they're not even.
No, not that I think about, no, yeah, but we, special education, transportation, as well as our regular student transportation is something that we're looking at. We haven't really had for that.
So at this point, what you're thinking about next year is to have the students meet with what, to, instead of being picked up at the door?
Parents will be responsible, I guess we'll bring them to a hub, we'll let them know in January of this year, so plenty of time to plan for that for next year.
Is that a common practice to other districts, and I'm just, I'm just wondering, I don't know myself, you know?
It is, yes, very much so. What we've done is, I think, been very gracious of doing door-to-door.
It's amazing.
It's time to.
Yeah.
So is, is, is eventually, do you think it would be something that most school systems will stop, take their students to magnet schools, you're saying the water just stood away?
Yeah, I don't know, I think it comes down to how many kids they have going out, how much they're getting back in state reimbursement, so.
Well, talk about how many students do this attack?
In the Friday update, I think it was seventy-nine students currently in that, that group, and we have, it was eighty-six last year, but it's seventy-nine for this currently, so. Roughly about that. And, yeah, that's true, I can't, yeah, we can't count that all of them ride, that's right.
So I, I, I have, is thirty-six, about thirty-six kids that actually drive.
Yeah, thirty-six families.
And so they will go to morning one location, which is good, so you'll look at the vessel, the morning one location, not just.
Nope, we would, we, I would propose we just have one hub for each, like, age level, you know, going to their destination.
Okay, so what I'm saying is the bus going to morning ones, more than one location afterwards, once they get up the bus?
Uh, well, the high school ones, yes.
But the elementary's no?
No.
Okay.
All right, I don't know if you know, what's the basis for the thirteen hundred, is that where, do different schools get reimbursed different amounts, or it's for every school a thirteen hundred?
For every district, it's thirteen hundred.
Okay, it's not how.
It used to be higher, and they, fifteen, sixteen, they slowly reduced it to fifteen, sixteen, if they dropped it to thirteen hundred, the state seems to have stayed that way.
Okay.
And we, and there's also a cap, I don't think the state has set the cap, because we still get fourteen hundred per student, so I guess it's just a certain part of the community level.
Because if that starts to get, because you can see, state's looking for savings everywhere, right, so if that starts to get cut, we may need to revisit, which means it's worth at least signaling, hey, we're gonna do everything we can, yeah, but if that gets cut, we're, we're gonna have to relocate.
But they pass it. It wants to be a cause, a trouble. It's pretty safe.
I don't know that anything is safe.
That's true.
I just wanna save things up there.
Okay.
So winds up being, maybe some, some savings, and certainly a little flexible.
It's more flexibility in the, the use of the buses.
Exactly.
And consistent communication.
Jane, you go ahead, then Bill.
So according to that email that came out Friday, there's a hundred and nine kids this year going to magnet schools, is that right?
Well, don't count the VoAg.
Don't count the VoAg, so it's seventy-nine.
Yeah.
And you're saying like thirty-six take the bus out of seventy-nine?
Thirty-six, but we are not, we're, we don't transport, does that include all the amendments?
Well, you don't transport friendship school.
No, we don't.
So there's something, our, so thirty-six. Drove ourselves to friendship, so I can tell you which ones we transport to, if you want to know, but I can, well, let me rephrase it. What I can claim on reimbursement for on this date is the science and technology, high school, science and technology, middle school, the marine science, and RMMs.
But do we transport to ones that we don't get reimbursement for?
I, so my count is thirty-six students, do we have, we don't?
No.
No, not at all, no, other than the VoAg's.
And you transfer those thirty kids to the VoAg, they don't drive themselves, or?
Well, they can choose to, if they want to, but we have some riding, yes.
And VoAg is not.
We actually drove thirty.
But VoAg is one of the requirements, we're required to offer them.
Right, and I understand that, I just didn't understand if we actually drove thirty kids, or if they drive themselves.
Well, that's how many we claimed for the grant was thirty-six, so.
So those are the people that we can claim, because at any given point, we, we will transport those kids.
Right, and I understand all that, I just didn't know all thirty of those students actually took the bus, or they seniors, juniors, like what's their?
Oh, I don't know.
Do you know if somebody comes out on like mid-year, like their car breaks out or, or comes out of the gear, can we reimburse at a pro-rated amount for that?
So I put in, so I put in whoever, my, my commission includes whoever's eligible to ride the bus.
Okay.
On, in the fall, yeah, in the fall, and then I do a follow-up in the March which finalizes it. So the only thing that I would miss would be if someone came in after March, you know, a new student, it would be, like, any student eligible to ride now would be.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure.
Bill? I was just trying to understand the current door-to-door situation, so what, what are we doing when you say we're picking these kids up and then?
It's like regular bus, it's pretty much.
Yeah, but, so are they then meeting at central location, and one bus going to this location? So the kid is getting, getting on two different buses and they're going now anyway?
Yes.
Yeah. And we're managing the transfer onto that bus, and then onto the next bus, and then, so there's that.
Okay, that's a step for bus, right?
And Bill, before this year, we didn't ask for any emergency contact information for those kids, so now we actually know who's on the bus and how to contact mom and dad if something were to happen. So it's a lot of, you know, care and keeping of who's riding.
Right now, there is some little person getting on a bus and remembering to get onto the other bus.
Yes, yes.
Same thing for the way home.
Right, yep, exactly.
It really does simplify the process, but also, you know.
Right.
We obviously want to notify learn as well.
Quick skills these kids are getting, navigating subway.
Little bit of city living, like watch Grand Church, yes, yes.
That's a good point. Okay, yeah, so that, that we would look to notify parents in January for next year.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, I think this is just for discussion.
This is up just for discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's just basically.
Yeah, so just kind of keep, we want the board to be informed, you know, informed in, in, in price, so if you hear something, you know exactly what.
Yeah.
Is this a way to push that?
Um, I don't, I don't know, it was interesting, because a couple of parents said, you know, if you wanna do it for next year, you know, let us know earlier, so that's exactly what we're, and we'd be okay with it, but there might be a few that don't, but I, I think.
I think with advanced notice, and, you know, I mean, it may not be a favorite plan, but I think it's understandable, given, you know.
And it's a flexible, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I, that's the most that I had heard was it's just so soon, like most school seasons, because it's just, you have to change so many different things. And I would say this would improve my, my business.
to change so many different things. Um, and I would say this one, my, my, this is really good. So to take your time, like, you have to, have time on, and use the services and that, it's a great opportunity.
Good, okay. That's it, that's it for our discussion. I should add, through the evening, administration reports.
Uh, so, yeah, a few, um, items of, um, interest and importance. Um, just want to kind of update you on graduation date. Uh, we know that the state, you know, legislation has changed that, um, we no longer had to wait until the first to, uh, set the graduation date. Um, that's great, but however, there's still state, uh, statute out there that seems to have to meet a hundred and eighty-five school days. So we're really in a quandary, because if we go and set the graduation date and have a bunch of snow days, um, and we try and graduate seniors, but they've only done a hundred and seventy-six days, we're having to be, we have to have them come back, or the last thing to come back. If they don't show up, it would get hit against our attendance reports to the state, and that's a problem, because it would hit those scores down and not look favorable. So we've talked to, you know, a number of different super communities in the area, um, and we all, those cities, we, we just basically kind of treated the same ways we've been treating them in the past. Um, and we'll see where, you know, we are come March timeframe. It looks like, you know, in favorable winter, then we can talk at that point. The grad committee, I've already met with an individual once, uh, early this year, we're meeting again in January. So that's the biggest, um, I'll make sure we're on the same page.
In line.
In line, yes, so we don't, next year, yes, yeah. So, yup. So we just wanted to kind of give you an update on that, and probably, you know, we're still on hold with setting the graduation date. Um, planetarium, um, we're, I, I haven't received anything from, um, the star system. So, uh, gonna reach out, you did not get a chance to do that at the end of last week, so we will reach out, Jack. And it's long tomorrow, we'll check and find out. Uh, it kind of where we stand, so we haven't gotten any updates yet. So it's been a couple of months now. There's supposed to be monthly updates, so I don't know if, but I hope because the mayor believed and all the, you know, funders is doing that, but, um, they're supposed to be in the country. So we'll see, that'll kind of tie in, you mentioned the hundred-third committee, uh, mayor convention as well. I, you know, we'll see once you get some feedback and then, you know, whether we're staying with that. Um, and then, uh, the, um, we're looking at another, kind of, uh, maybe Board Ed, maybe Board Finance, maybe January, January twenty-third is maybe an option. So we'll get more information out to you on that, and the Board of Finance, great, and basically some of the Board of Finance, as many of you as possible, into, into some schools for tours and see concerts, especially before we die, having a bunch of season for. Then. Yeah. So, long, but, so we're, we're toying with that, that date. Um, and then we're getting ready, just last piece quick, we're getting ready for Monday night, sixteenth, with our budget, second budget workshop. Uh, we, Mariana, um, crafting up a, you know, a one-page, like we did last year, kind of, it's a break on ahead of time for some, um, to send you, you know, like, send, right, it'll send the Board of Finance today. So we'll have something that could, you know.
Good.
So we're on that, we'll get that out Wednesday night, or it's, like, it's, uh, it's.
We encourage questions if they happen.
Exactly.
So we're looking for that.
Yup, exactly. So we're, we're still, you know, putting together the final pieces. Um, we'll, we'll introduce this after noon. It's, it's morning. Yeah, actually, we had a bottom there, almost.
Yeah.
Just turn out. Yeah, um, yeah, yeah.
I mean, they, they did dive into it.
Ever the last year.
I think the second one, too, you're gonna have more information for.
Jack, we should send them around to the Board of Finance. That's Monday, the sixteenth, five o'clock, and it'll start at five-thirty. In the high school library, right?
At five-thirty?
Uh, yeah, it starts at five-thirty. All right, that's all. Amy?
Um, so I attached as a follow-up to, since Jean was here at our last, uh, meeting, I just attached as a follow-up sort of the next generation accountability report and the quick, I think, queue that I passed up last year when I sort of had presented to, just to circle back on you, I will be using some of these data points for, um, my budget. So I just, I put, um, some of those ideas in there, and I'm happy to circle back with the board on those, um, during budget collaboration, should I say? Um, the other piece, just as a highlight, is two things at the elementary level I just want to bring your attention to. Number one is we have a partnership. I was lucky enough to be part of the Guard Earth Theater, um, part of a grant with them. We reached out to them. Um, our administrators, as well as teachers, felt that a relationship with the Guard Theater is a positive one for K to four students. And so one of the things that we're doing is we're ensuring that every K to four class attends one Guard performance every year. Um, and so we have just had grade levels identify which performance they want to, which will be building specific, deciding which ones they want to go to. So we're very excited about that. It's a significant cost savings for the PTA or the parents that are going for that trip. So it's great that we're part of that. Um, so there were those performances actually starting in February through June. There's different performance dates. And then the other thing I just want to mention is this week in particular, um, we are training all of the elementary teachers on Fontis and Canal literacy assessment. Um, we have been, up to this point, sort of, if you think of a big reading assessment, we've been using what's called the DRA. Um, we transitioned over to Fontis and Canal, so that we have sort of a more consistent way of assessing, uh, literacy across our three elementary schools. And so every day is a different grade level. So today I have the kindergarten all day, then I'll be first, second, third, fourth. So in a week, we'll get everyone trained in sort of the basics of administering, and then our literacy specialist will take over providing some grade levels for our, for our teachers within that classroom. Um, it has been something that some teachers have been looking for, different means of assessing literacy. But I think the biggest piece for us is assessing, and assessing with Fontis and Canal is they have what's called a literacy continuum. So it allows us to really look at all the components of literacy, especially at the elementary level. But also, there's a comprehension component to it that we felt wasn't really present within the DRA assessment. So it's sort of been something we've used into. So that's this week. So it's great. I'm with the teachers, I run back, I go to a budget meeting, then I run back and I sit with the teachers, and I run back and I go to a budget meeting. It's great. Um, but you'll hear about some of those supports. So those are just to highlight a couple of things.
Amy, is there, is there some information on that stuff, or that, that you could, that's readable for, for me, and whether it could be passed into the board, just so?
No problem. They actually, they're on the website for quite a while, so it's okay.
Yeah, great.
Sure, no problem.
Barry, any on that? Are you using Fontis and Canal for the curriculum aspect, aspect, or be just the assessment?
We're using it for the assessment aspect. It's considered our benchmark three times a year, in addition to PALS, Lexi, or reading plus, and the triangulation aspect.
Yeah, and I think parents will, is there any, will there be any education for parents on exactly like what your child's FCP level means?
So that will come out of the conversation, because we have to work on the elementary report card. So I think oftentimes, right, your report card to us tends to be a marketing tool as to what kids are learning over time. And I think that's one of the questions, is because we have conferences, because we have a report card, what's the conversation look like? And I think for me, the literacy continuum can act as a nice place back to a parental conversation. So I'm able to say, your child may be performing at a level C within vocabulary. However, I'm working on summarizing with them. I've really watched them move up to a D level within summarizing. So now me, as a parent, I'm starting to wrap my head around, okay, it's summarizing as to whether at this level, however, their fluency is right on point, you know, and the first grade, level D would be sort of an end game if you would. So I think for us, that was what brought us to that assessment, is that that continuum can act as a nice common language between parents and me a little bit, and educate the parent a little bit, and that profile of what that reader looks like is just an additional sort of support. So, um, but I see it as, do you put another report card? Do we make your part of conferences? Where does it belong? And I think that's a conversation that teachers need to implement, you know? Uh, I was with K today, so they implement in January, because it's K, right? Um, and so they'll do it twice a year. And then my other grade level, we do a three. But they have to work on calibrating and implementing, making sure that they're on point of how they're scoring, before they want to go ahead and market to parents and our customers.
Any questions? Mariana?
That's mine. We're working on. We're working on budget with the departments, um, and, yeah, we have, all these, all these permissions together.
We need to look at another, um, keep on that note, going to, look at another, maybe section, you know, centering the, um, this is the one that gets not one night. So what are you gonna progress? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And actually, I think, we're gonna see where this alarm just opened personally, because it's, they have proposed, something, proposed, uh, you know, procedures to put it, and at the time, even if he's talking, to make sure it's feasible, and not that what moves to go.
Yep.
Hey, it's kind of, um, you know, community reports are a little operative. Um, that brings us to board counting future agenda topics. So at this point, in, basically, board members are allowed to communicate anything they want to, to fellow board members, uh, or particularly raise, uh, any areas that they would like to see the board address, or as a future agenda topic, or idea, whatever. So that's kind of the goal for, um, so everybody having a comment. So Jamie's got her hand, Daisy, Barry, and Eric's.
So just the usual, yeah, the update, the gala was, uh, Friday night, but I could not make it. I have family somewhere, not, well, when dominated.
No, they didn't need me after all.
So it was our, making the gala, um, gave our, a bunch of money, you know. Um, but we had our annual meeting last week, um, and we have some openings on our board of directors, and everyone's looking to do. We have some openings on our board of directors, and we're looking for a chair for fundraising. So there's some spots open on there. But we, um, have broken our $500,000 mark, um, and we have put out bids. So we are hopefully looking to start making in March. So it's very exciting. We're hoping for Memorial Day weekend, but we're realistically thinking of the live.
Barry, did you have that? Oh, Eric, okay, Eric?
Sure. About a month ago, maybe a little more, we, we had a discussion about, okay, and, um, I do want to, I want to spend some time, what can we do as a board have an impact on that, and maybe other substances, but I think that it's, so, Betty and Grace is here, we're just, kind of, hearing her, what she said, and her insights was just so helpful. Does seem like something that we should be doing, something that, it seemed like, so.
All right.
So, uh, there's a forum that Holly Paul, there's a, the Wind Wraisers, yeah, uh, there's apparently, there was a lot of stuff going on, uh, in terms of, there's a bag on the data chart, we've also.
I don't, I don't know.
They, they, they.
I think he's here.
He knows something, they have no parent negotiations.
Anyway, what I'm trying to say is there was a discussion legislatively, there's a lot of things going on. So, um, I took it back to Holly Paul's and other folks, and it was like that, that talk. But I agree with her in terms of what's to, do something as a board, you know, figuring out what that message is.
Can I just ask, the last time we had conversation, I thought we were going to develop a letter to send, um, it's, um.
Got halfway there.
So that's still happening?
Yeah, I think there's a larger conversation that's still needs to happen, the various places of, um, and I think that forum kind of holds a lot of different eyes to different conversations. But I, I'm an working job.
So just to clarify my point, absolutely anything can do a broader scale, it's fantastic, but we would be selfish and say, what can we do right here, in this school, middle school, hopefully there's nothing, elementary schools. Um, but, you know, what can we do to really impact our, our folks? Um, because some of that stuff will take, could take a while, and there's a lot more.
So Eric, we also have a seat available on the Eastland Youth Coalition, and we are meeting on December twelfth at five o'clock at Park and Rec. Um, we talked about vaping and suicide, where this is a harm, um, draw a prediction suicide, and we raised money to do, we raised this up in the store, so if, um, come and sit in. Yep. December twelfth at five, and we do that Park and Rec, it's the second Thursday of every month. So we can't do it this month, coming in January, but we, um, talk about things to do with the schools, for students and parents. We're always looking for people to come and sit on, and I guess, and.
So, we're, we're, Park and Rec. Grace, yeah, that was on the panel.
Yeah.
And her and Chris Olson probably were the most articulate, I mean, it was myself, Mike, as well as the two of them representing the district, as far as ideas, the things that they feel should be happening with students, whether it be at the middle, at the school level, or at the building level. Um, so I would encourage that, even if Grace is around the table, even at Youth Coalition, and you, are you resourceful of the state there?
Yeah.
Should it rep?
I would say, I don't think we have very many students show up this year, so it would be nice to get some new students.
I just want to add in, because Mike was here and Grace is in, what we really focused, I know I did, about, you know, having, because it really is powerful. Um, and I think sometimes people have that, people, I think sometimes are afraid of it, have that conversation. And I even said to Mike Sisi-Ravo for standing up and actually saying some of the challenges that not only we're having in our district, but other districts too, and keeping that conversation going. I don't mind, I don't want, on different, on different ones, but this one in particular, keeping it in the school with a lot of other kids, having conversation with our students, I think, is a great one.
See, that's very good.
Another thing, uh, when I sat in the audience last week and listened to the EdSense report, there's one, uh, person named, uh, Jay Waters, uh, owner of the Next Generation Building Index. It has two figures in that, the difference between a performance index and growth index. And I think the difference between that, if we could discuss that as a board, I think, would like some implications.
Make one.
That'd be great.
Okay, good, excellent. So let's make sure, so we have vaping and, uh, performance over there. Performance. Yeah, gotcha.
It gets very intricate in the difference between scales.
I know, yeah, yeah, like that, yeah. Very.
Um, the Mikey Saga, I'd like to get a copy of it everywhere, just to, uh, a little call for what's going on at the high school.
You can subscribe on, I do.
Could, you know, can we get it though digitally?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're actually working to push more of a digital approach, uh, you know, with a number of copies, uh, for, for savings by default. We'll look into seeing how to set you up.
Right, I just think it's a really good read, just to kind of understand what the kids are saying, what they're talking about. They talk about relationship issues in here, and.
Yeah, yeah. I know Barbara, uh, was a big fan of reading, reading it and then looking, getting, picking up, um, vibes of what was going on at the high school. So I just send it up to everybody.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, well, generally, I assume. Not every week, no.
No, it's every week.
You can subscribe, you can subscribe right online, so it will come right here.
It's not weekly, all right.
I think, is it, probably, it's monthly or weekly?
I think it's monthly.
I think it's monthly.
It's got one, monthly.
But there's also, um, weekly blogs that they can do, so, I think, they, they got a lot of different things going on, that if you subscribe to it, then it, you know, it's, you know, always.
Yeah.
You can see.
Great. Any other comments?
Well, the other thing is, uh, sometimes boards have schools that they are more affiliated with, so different board members adopt a school. Is that something that's?
That has, we, that has been discussed, uh, multiple times. Um, there's upsides to that, and there's downsides. Um, we certainly could, with that back on, uh, the topic, to have that conversation. We could, that's something we discussed, you know, time of the board retreat.
Yeah, that'd be a good, that's a good, definitely, yeah. Yeah, that'd be a good one for the board retreat, definitely, yeah.
So, yeah, but that's.
Yes, if we don't, that's a more clever one.
I just got a comment, I just want to thank Lily Haynes for having me, you know, it's the every week, that volunteer, the annual shelf event.
Oh, so you did have that.
It is always a very fun event, uh, I always say that if you're ever feeling down, go in and visit the elementary schools, uh, it's very, very exciting, and they have a, for my dis, so. Thank you very much, and the, uh, Jingle Bell Podcast, if anybody wants to walk, run, fall.
It's a Saturday or Sunday, can it fall?
Plus, it's, um, it's, um, wait, Saturday, exactly.
Still looking for volunteers.
Yeah.
It's great to run in the rain or the snow, it's liberating.
Um, Bayberry Foundation.
Good, any other, any other comments? Okay, with that, um, public comment? No, just seen no member in public, uh, and so with that.
I make a motion to adjourn.
No second. All in favor?